Call this April 11th, 2023, meeting of Fairview Planning Commission to order. Mr. Anderson, if you could lead us in the prayer, and if everyone can stand for the pledge as well.
Thank you, friends and neighbors of Fairview for joining us tonight and putting our minds and hearts in the right place to do the business of the city of Fairview and help us to understand the tasks that are in front of us and how important they are to our citizens. Thank you for a wonderful Easter and help us enjoy the lives that you've given us. Do just let me pray, amen.
Amen.
Let me just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with an approval of the agenda.
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Anderson, Calley, Ms. Jones, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Street?
Aye.
Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, is there any citizen comments for this evening?
There's one tonight, Mr. Tom Vlach.
Sir, if you'd just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Tom Vlach, V-L-A-C-H. I live at 7324 Lakelit Cove, which is in Pennock Place. It's a new development in Fairview off of old Nashville. We're concerned about the streets not being done. There was a commitment by the, by the, by the builder and by the person that did the internal work that it was going to be done last year. And I believe you guys have given him a Tony, this is Tony we're talking about. You know Tony? I believe a lot of you do. Anyhow, you've given him a, an extension on his performance bond. And we're just wondering what the date is going to be when this developer is actually going to finish the streets and our development. Can you tell me that?
Sir, the citizen comment portion of the meeting is more of a just you letting us know your thoughts and comments, and it's not really a back and forth? We do not have that answer at the moment, no.
If you leave your, if you leave your name and number, sir, and give it to Ms. Tati, she can look into it and give you a call. But there's no rebuttal during citizen's comments.
We're here representing the development. You'd like to know, that's all we'd like to know, is it a commitment for the next time that the developer says he's going to do the streets, or isn't it? Is it an extension?
Sir, this, this is not a question to answer, period. If you leave your name and number for Ms. Tati, she's the city's engineer, and she'll get back with you after the meeting.
Very good.
Yeah, we appreciate your comments. We hear you, and we'll get you that information when possible. That was all for the citizen comments.
That's all for my comment, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Move on to approval of the minutes from March 14th, 2023 meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Calley, Mayor Anderson? Oh, I'm sorry. I was going off here on that one. Williams, my apologies. And if you will call the roll, please.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Ms. Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Item number one, PC Resolution PC 15-23, rezoning Zero Chester Road, rezoning 17.23 acres, map 042, parcel 142.00. Current zoning RS40, single-family residential. Proposed zoning RM20, multifamily residential. Property owner Kathy Linda Oneda. Is there a motion to discuss?
I make a motion to approve discussion.
I second.
Uh, Schulist, Anderson. And then is there, if there's anyone representing the applicant, if you want to come up as well? We'll start with staff comments, but if you would like to join us.
A staff report for PC 15-23. John Richard Patterson, engineer representing the rezoning of Zero Chester Road with written approval by the rightful owner Kathy Linda Oneda, is requesting that this property be rezoned from its current zoning of RS40, single-family residential, to proposed zoning of RM20, multifamily residential. It contains 17.23 acres. It's located near the intersection of Chester Road and Highway 100 directly east of the Shell Gas Station. The six parcels to the west, north, and south of this property are zoned CG Commercial General, and the parcels to the east are zoned RS40, single-family residential. The parcel is listed as Legacy Residential. It's up on your screen right now is the 2040 plan view of this. I can go through the colors here in a minute. This parcel is listed as Legacy Residential Medium in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan with appropriate land uses listed as Single Family Residential with RS40 or RS20 zoning. The properties surrounding this parcel are listed as either Town Center or Commercial Corridor, which lists the appropriate land uses as Multifamily Residential, Office, Retail Restaurant, Single Family Attached Residential, and Single Family Detached Residential and Civic Institutional. The proposed zoning appears to be appropriate based on the site's proximity to Fairview Boulevard and the future Town Center area identified in the Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. There are no staff comments and no conditions of approval.
Thank you. If you would like to share, share your perspective.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elsie Vallis, and I'm here representing Elmington Capital Group. We are a development company based out of Nashville, and my team specifically develops multifamily apartments across the southeast. We're excited to expand our footprint here to Fairview. I'm a born and raised Williamson County native, and I'm just looking forward to working with you all on this project. So something unique to Elmington is that we, we build all of the apartments that we develop. We then manage them with our property management company, and then we as well are long-term owners, so we really care to be invested in the communities that we develop in. So happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
You have a floor, Mayor.
Thank you. So this is approximately 340 units on 17 acres.
So our proposal right now is for 252 units. It would not be the full, the full zoning of the RM20 code, but that's just due to our site conditions and constraints we're working with.
And you're looking to enter and exit off of Chester Road into this?
That's correct. The main entrance would be off of Chester Road. We would have a secondary entrance as well, and we're navigating what that secondary entrance, especially a fire and access entrance, would be.
Would there be road improvements to the Chester Road? It's not that great of a, of a road to start with for.
Jump in here.
Mayor? This is just here for rezoning tonight, correct? There's no site plan? I think those questions will be appropriate at site plan, but not at, not at the rezoning level. So all, all that's before this board tonight is rezoning. And not the site plan, and so it's important that we not confuse what we're talking about tonight.
Okay. So you're looking at 20 units per acre with this rezoning? Okay, thank you.
And just for background, this, this came before the planning commission several months ago with a different buyer, but the same general layout, correct?
Same rezoning request.
And at that time, we approved it, is that right?
That is correct.
So now we just have a different buyer?
Correct.
Okay.
At that time, it was one, two, three, four, five yays and three nays. Butler was absent at the, that time.
And to make it clear, this board will be making a recommendation to the BOC about whether, whether it's rezoned or not. And so even if this board votes in the affirmative, all it is is a recommendation to the BOC that the property be rezoned. The BOC would be the, as a legislative body, would be the party that, the board that rezones the property.
There's a traffic count device on Chester Road this afternoon that was not there this morning, I don't believe, so is that, is that yours?
It's not. Yeah.
PDOT's running traffic counts right now in that general area, just FYI.
And to restate, the, the comprehensive plan for this legacy neighborhood is RS40 and R20, is that correct? There is no multifamily listed on the comprehensive plan?
That's correct. It's adjacent to the Town Center overlay, but yes, that's correct.
I think when we, well, I don't want to speak for everybody, but it's interesting that this comes back before us because it gives us this opportunity to look at it a second time. Looking at the neighboring properties, the zoning in that area with the large development of city center coming in, personally, I think being lenient on what that area calls for may have been a mistake that we considered in the past, on my, in my opinion. I think you're asking a lot. Future, we discussed this, obviously, when, as the mayor brought up. I mean, I think it's something to keep in mind, though, that if this was to be rezoned and there was some site plan to come in front of us, I think there's going to be a, a heavy amount of scrutiny on the, the, the entrance and exit of that development, just to keep in mind. But that's, that's my opinion.
I was one of the nays last time. I'm still definitely a nay on the RM20. RM20, based on the 2040 plan, which was not adopted last time, only fits to the interchanges. And we've had, we've denied it everywhere else. People have been hot about it everywhere else. I, I think a multifamily fits here, but I'm thinking it's more of an RMA, not RM20. That's fairly dense for this city, particularly right there off of Chester with no access to Boone. And Boone's worse than Chester, so. I understand the buffer zone and that the RM, R20 may not be right, and there should be some leniency, but RM20 is not, in my opinion, something that should be going in this spot.
I think something too to keep in mind is that once this property would be rezoned, if it was to be rezoned, you know, as seen in the past, someone brought this up, wanted to rezone it, and then they decided not to move forward with that. If the city rezones that property and then you two decide to walk away, we're stuck with a property that's been rezoned now for RM20. That would open that up to all sorts, all new side problems. So also something just to keep in mind for the board.
I would just like to say that we finally adopted the 2040 plan, and even though there's been a lot of changes that didn't quite follow that, we've adopted it now. It's what the people want, and I think we need to stick to our 2040 plan as much as possible. And us citizens, and y'all, our citizens also, we just can't handle this right now. It's way too much for everyone. We need to get caught up, get things taken care of, because we can't take care of these people if we don't get caught up with anything else, because that's what it's doing, is bringing so many more citizens in here, and we don't have enough police, firemen, city workers. We don't have enough to help support more people in Fairview right now. It's my opinion.
Anyone else? Hearing none, Ms. Jones, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Nay.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Nay.
Ms. Sinyard?
Nay.
Ms. Street?
Nay.
Mr. McDonald?
Nay.
Mayor Anderson?
Nay.
Motion fails seven-two. Is that correct? Business item number two. New business item number two, PC Resolution PC 16-23, rezoning RNMC Property Group 2065, Fairview Boulevard, two acres, map 042HC, parcel 012.00. Current, current zoning RS40, single-family residential. Proposed zoning C1 commercial zoning. Property owner Southeast Investment Partners. Is there a motion to discuss?
Make a motion to discuss? Second.
Calley Magnner. And if there's anyone representing the applicant that'd like to come and join us as city staff goes ahead and lets us know their comments.
That would actually be a motion to approve. Just want to make sure we're, that's, that's the motion that's putting on the table, and we'll ultimately vote on that motion. So it should, it should reflect as a motion to approve in a second.
Thank you.
Staff report, PC 16-23. Billy Frank, a representative of the property group rezoning 2065 Fairview Boulevard with written approval by the rightful owner, Southeast Investment Partners, is requesting that this property be rezoned from its current zoning of RS40, single-family residential, to a proposed zoning of C1 commercial zoning. It contains two acres and is located on the southern side of the intersection of Highway 100 and Cox Pike. The parcels to the west, north, and east are zoned either CG Commercial General or C3 Commercial, and the parcel to the south is zoned RS40, single-family residential. C1 zoning allows for restaurants, transient habitation, such as hotels and commercial extended stays, retail sales, general business and communications, banking, financial insurance, real estate services, health, fitness, and same-day medical care facilities. This parcel is listed as Commercial Center in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan with appropriate land uses listed as Retail Restaurant, Office, Light Industrial, Multifamily as a Mixed-Use Development, and Civic Institutional. The properties surrounding this parcel are listed as Commercial Center, except for the property directly to the south, which is listed as a residential transition. We have no staff comments and no conditions of approval for this property.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you'd like to just give us your name and?
Sure. My name is Billy Frank. I'm a principal at RNMC Property Group. We're local here in middle Tennessee. We are working on behalf of one of our clients. We're developers that do single tenant retail work in this area in the southeast. This particular site was approved by, by our, our tenant, and we have got it under contract, therefore requesting to rezone it. We feel like it fits in. It looks like it's in the newly adopted plan. And we do have several engineers engaged, obviously, you know, conditioned upon the rezoning. And so I'm here to answer whatever questions you guys have and be helpful if I can.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question for staff. Is there, I know that location is, is labeled as commercial moving forward for future zoning, but it's, it's an interesting spot, the way that intersection comes out, and, and I'm just curious, I know this is just a rezoning, but I would like, I'd feel more comfortable just having an understanding from what the city's perspective is on that intersection. I mean, if it's something that goes in there that has a decent amount of traffic, I don't know how that would work with the light right there, because you would, it's just odd. Is that fair to, fair to say?
It would, it would have to be the fourth leg at that intersection. It would have to line up.
In itself would be on a signal.
Yeah, it would have to line up with that, or it would, there's no room to have it at any other place. I think there is a access with the La Plaza as well.
Yeah, so the, the current site plan, I know we're not into site plans, but the current site plan would be to line up with the light, and then there is a access easement on the Mexican restaurant property. I think from my understanding, and I don't know all of the facts, but from my understanding is that that access easement goes back to this eight acres back behind it that is currently for sale. We are in discussions with the owner of the property adjacent to have also a cross-access there. Our, our tenant would require two, two access points, so that access on the access easement, and then directly at the light is what our initial plans laid out would be.
Thank you for giving me more of an answer than you needed to.
Sure, sure.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
What is planned for that? I think there's a, is there a house there right now?
There's currently a house there. That would obviously come down, but it would be single tenant retail. If I need to disclose, I'm happy, I will, but, you know, I don't, I don't know necessarily however y'all want to handle that.
You're not obligated to.
Okay.
My one comment is, based on our last review, it seems like the community is in need of increasing our commercial support of the growing, ever-growing residential needs, and this is a very commercial area along a busy access point, so personally, it seems to make a lot of sense to me. And it, and, correct me, it is surrounded by commercial on either side of it as we stand today, correct?
That, that's correct. The property to the west is the Wash 37062 that's, that's going up right now.
Okay, thank you. Can I, a, request an amendment to the motion? Instead of a motion to discuss, it would be a motion for approval.
I'm sorry, did Calley, I, did he, did he say motion to approve or motion to discuss? I know I.
Motion to discuss, which is why.
I think I only, I finally said it because the first one was motion to discuss. Usually I say motion to approve.
Yeah, it's, it's fine, and it's a very technical point. I just want to make sure that we're moving forward appropriately.
Mr. Parker clarified that it was an approval.
And when I, I, I made a comment, and I, and I took that as correcting the, the motion unless Mr. Calley disagrees, but I, I think we're good going forward.
Okay. Any other comments pertaining to PC Resolution 16-23?
I do, I have one comment. Can you tell me what the most recent 2040 plan says for this parcel again?
It's listed as Commercial Center with appropriate land uses, like retail restaurant, what he's proposing.
Okay, so this isn't part of the Town Center? I know it's pretty far from it.
No, there was a, originally, there was a concept to put Town Center in this area, but the other area was chosen as the Town Center, but this was listed as a potential site, this area, but no, it's not.
Okay, glad, thank you.
Any other comments from the planning commission? Hearing none, Ms. Jones, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Ms. Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries nine-zero.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Move on to bonds and letters of credit. Ms. Schulist, would you like to read that?
Well, sure. Pepper Tree Phase Three Bond Reduction set at $124,000. Good there. Fernvale Springs Condos Phase Four Bond Reduction set at $109,000, $109,300. There you go. City Center Phase One Reclamation set at $235,695. And Bell Construction Reclamation Bond set at $132,440.
Thank you.
Yep.
Move on to reports and discussion from the city staff. Whoever would like to go first.
I suppose that's me. I am the staff, okay. Hello, everyone. Happy to be here tonight. As you know, we're kind of transitioning right now. It's been a little hectic. I appreciate y'all bearing with me as I try to navigate this. I did want to talk about, I just told Tom, I had, you know, a vacation planned, you know, a year ago before I knew I would be the last one, so the May planning, last one standing, the May Planning Commission meeting, I am going to be absent, so Tom and I talked about if you would want to push that meeting or what you would want to do, push it a week or have it, and me trying to figure out someone to come in my place. So kind of wanted to have some general discussion on that, if y'all had any opinions or?
My, my two cents on that would be, I think if you were absent and we were to have a planning commission meeting and there was any insight needed from the city, we would probably be pretty hand-tight on that. So I think it would be best personally to wait until you were with us, but that's, how does everyone else feel?
Do you know yet how many things we'll need to speak on at that point?
It's a little early, but possibly three. They're, they're, they're not two rezonings, I'll say that. They're, yeah, they're a little bit more in-depth. I could write very intricate staff reports and y'all, I could send out the packet two weeks early, and y'all could ask me as many questions as you want in those two weeks, but I would not be able to be there that night. So it's up to y'all. I can do that, or I can, a week, it's up.
When, when are you gone?
I am gone.
Is this for the May meeting?
Yep, this is for the May meeting, so it'll be that eighth through the 12th.
Second or 16th is an option, maybe?
Yep, I think pushing it closer might be, might make deadlines, because we have specific IDT deadlines that we have to hit. I don't know if I could push it forward, but I can push it back.
I would, I mean, the 16th, is that an issue for anybody?
I'm okay with the 16th.
And that still works with your schedule?
Yep, yep.
I think it would benefit us as well as the city to have her present for that meeting, right? Yeah.
That, that is up to y'all.
Yeah, that's just, what is the, we officially have to do with that? Just notify it on the website that the meeting's been postponed a week? Tom, is there a process there?
Yes, we'll just advertise that the meeting has been rescheduled.
Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Tati?
Oh, no, that's it for tonight.
Thank you.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. City engineer now.
Nothing again.
The city attorney doesn't have anything. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So May 16th, did we?
Yes, ma'am. We will officially make that a thing. May 9th, yeah. It'll be the third Tuesday of the month then, instead of second. Mr. Calley, do you have any comments for this evening?
No comment tonight, thank you.
Williams?
I do have a question. For our gentleman who came up earlier and made a comment about the roads not being complete in this area, who's going to follow up on that to ensure that developer will do what he said he was supposed to do, and is there any revelation with his bond extension? Yeah, so we are in the process of that right now. We monitor bonds. We, we typically follow up with the developer two to three months out before their bond is expiring to let them know, hey, you have a punch list of items to do, you have to do them, or, you know, we'll have to possibly start the process of pulling your bond, which no one wants that. So we have contacted the developer, and their plan is to top the roads. We have been in contact, I think the last contact we had was today, and they said they're in the process of that. We're keeping up to date with that. That's in my office, so we will be handling all of that, and. Yes, yep, it is later this month. Yep, I will send, I will send you all the information. I have your contact information. I'll, I'll send it all over.
Mayor Anderson?
Also, just another comment on that. I mean, no excuses, but we have had weather up and down, and it's got to be a consistent 50 degrees from what I understand to, for that blacktop to settle. So that might be an issue of what's been going on with that, so.
Yeah, I mean, plans are just now, yeah, coming back.
Just comment, but.
Sir, if you, if they would like to continue a conversation with you after the meeting, though, but I'm sorry, this isn't a back and forth at this moment. It's, it's okay, I'm, my apologies. Mayor Anderson?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Sinyard?
Nothing for me tonight.
Mr. Magnner?
Just, we appreciate the, the city going through the changes. going through the changes uh that you have to do and um hang in there. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
I'd just like to amen what he just said. I, I think everything uh changes for the better. I'm not saying anything negative about the previous people, but when you make changes, at the end of the day, I think it's always better.
Take this opportunity to welcome Ms. Street to the meeting, and also have, you have a opportunity to add comments.
I just want to thank y'all for letting me be here, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Uh, Ms. Toddie, you are a rock star. Thanks for hanging in there, and that's all I got.
So a couple things. Um, Mayor, I, I echo your comments. I wrote this down as well, sir, to look into it. Unfortunately, we don't have all the information we have, that we would like to have on hand that we can just draw from our head, but that is something that I'm sure we'll get you answers on. Um, May third, from five to seven, I got an email from M-TAS that said they were having a intro to planning. Um, it's a two-hour Zoom training. And I think it would be pretty beneficial, seeing how there has been so much turnover on this Planning Commission, that it might be a good idea to, to attend that. I don't know what the cost of it is. I haven't looked into it, but there is some. I think it's twenty or twenty-five dollars. Yeah, it's, it's minimal. Spring Hill Planning Commissioners. And we do have a budget that allows for training for the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes, yes, we, we could take care of whoever wants to go.
I personally attended one of these um in person after, shortly after joining the Planning Commission, and I got, I felt like I got a lot out of it. It's really good for just kind of setting expectations of what we're here to do and what lane we are in. Um, I think it would be beneficial for everyone to take it, including myself. As a Planning Commissioner, you have an obligation to take so many credits uh every year. I think it's four credits a year, and I, I don't know how well that's been done in the past, but it's very important, uh, should the city have legal challenges. Uh, as I said, uh, several weeks ago, uh, during the um continuing education, lawsuits against cities typically come out of a police and fire department and the Planning Commission on uh land use decisions. And so the, the first thing a good lawyer will do, will check to see what training the Planning Commission has or hasn't had, and when they don't have it, it's a problem. And so I would urge you to take those credits and get them out of the way. It's, it's kind of like your, your, your kids, if you have kids, you want them to get the requirements out of the way first thing, so you're not having to worry about them in May, you know, right before they enter school, so um, if you can attend the training, I know it's a good one. I know several uh Planning Commissioners in Spring Hill that will be attending, and others, and um, this particular training is, is done by M-TAS, and it will, it will be well done. And I can send that email to everybody. I don't know why it was only sent to me, but uh, there's other trainings on there too that you can look through. If, like you said, we need more hours, so if you need them, there's other classes that you can take as well. Um, the last thing for me is just, I would like to s, to I guess extend a thank you to Brandon Butler for the time that he served on this board. I know he was here for a very long time. There's a lot of mixed emotions on the time that he spent here, but nonetheless, he's a citizen of Fairview, and he dedicated a lot of his time to this board, so I would just like to take a second and say thank you to Brandon Butler. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.